All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the September 15th, 2025 City Council Work Session. I would ask that everyone please silence all electronic devices and put your phones down. And we'll move into our agenda right away. I nail the agenda's fire station location analysis report. And at this time, we'll hear from Matt Lawrence, our Fire Chief, and Greg Grayson. Good evening, gentlemen.
So Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to be with you tonight. As you mentioned, Mayor, I'm here with Greg Grayson, who he volunteered earlier this year to assist us with some with the analysis of where we can be looking for future fire station sites. Our last fire station location analysis was in 2011. Since that time, as you well know, our landscape has changed drastically with the city's growth. Our service demand has grown as well. So we thought it was a great time and opportunity with the Mayor's blessing for us to do an evaluation of that. So tonight, we come to you with as short a summary as we can of a very large body of work that Greg and his team have put forward to do this analysis that you should have before or in your agenda package for tonight. So our goal tonight is just to kind of walk through the highlights of that and give you some information for just some information for to digest. And then, you know, hopefully move into some further conversations about how we carry out some of this in the near future. So with that, I'll turn it over to Greg and let him walk through his presentation.
Thank you. Thank you all so very much for allowing me to be with you tonight. And thank you for all that you do for the folks of Burlington today and today. I sincerely appreciate that very much. It was our team's honor to be able to assist Burlington with this. We serve and have served for several years for the North Carolina municipalities as a fire consulting provider. We're currently contracted with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners for all 100 counties. So we do a number of fire station studies across the state. And we had good experience with this. Your data was very good. Your data was solid. My data persons really liked looking at that. We had great cooperation from your department and all of city staff because this involves a number of entities. So thank you to city staff for doing that. I'm going to step through really an overview of the detailed information that you have in your packets or in your information and touch base with some of the highlights of those. Again, we help a number of cities and counties across the state. And it's our pleasure to be able to do that here at home in Burlington. So we are an independent third party group, meaning that we simply look at what the data says. We have an excellent GIS analyst on our staff, a person who's excellent looking at all of the data and the response components. And so we're just simply looking, what does the data say? What does the model say? And what do the facts say? Moving ahead so that you can have some tools to make better planning predictions with. We use a very predictive model. We looked at the incidents, as we mentioned, and we looked at in-depth with GIS analyst piece of this work and then produced the report that each of you have. When you look at fire station locations, you're really looking at, you know, to Ms. Smith, the dial's 911 and her kitchen's on fire until the fire department arrives or her spouse's glasses on the ground or one of her, that the time for Mrs. Smith is from the time she dials 911 until someone helps is there. And that's the way we try to look at that. There's many pieces of that cascade. The call processing, the answering, the turnout, the route, the travel, all of those pieces to get someone to help Mrs. Smith. So we try to look at that from her perspective. But the piece that we're looking at primarily with fire station locations is travel time. That's one component that's somewhat predictable, helps be somewhat predictable for location and response. We look specifically at Burlington. We had data for '23, '24, we had significant data in '23, '24 in the program that you used. And when we look at that, this statement to you as elected officials, what level of service does our fire department provide? In that particular case, we're looking at your level of service from the time that that 911 call is placed until the first unit arrives from Burlington Fire. Is six minutes, 54 seconds or less 90% of the time? And that's a very credible level of service. So especially that first unit, that first unit's arrival is very credible throughout the entire city. So we always measure at the 90th percentile. That's there's going to be those times when you have multiple incidents, you have a storm, mechanical issues, whatever may happen. So the national standard is to look at the 90th percentile, and that's obviously the way that we look at this. So when you look at that standard, and some of the numbers here change when you put it through a different lens, but you're meeting that six minute and 20 second standard of the consensus standard about 85% of the time. So it's a little bit short of the 90. It's not a legal mandate. It's not a requirement. It's just simply an industry consensus standard that municipalities and counties use to determine the levels of service. So that's the framework in which we look at this information. This chart here just shows you a little bit about, we start looking at, well, how long does it take for everyone who's needed on that incident to arrive? And this is just an illustrative example. You'll see several of these in your report. But when we look over on this side, I'll just draw your attention down to this piece here. The full complement arrival, meaning whatever's needed to deal with that emergency. When we look at that data, that's about 13 minutes, 30 seconds, 90% of the time. So we look at, well, what is the time delivery for the first unit to arrive? And how long does it take for all the needed units to get there? The needed number of people to safely operate on an incident. So that's the purpose of this slide, just hopefully let you know that first unit is arriving pretty quickly. But when you look at the total units that are needed, it takes longer to get there, right? We look at when your incidents are occurring, day, night, weekday, weekend, all the times by the hour of the day. There's quite a bit of focus across the state and country on peak times today because as our demands grow and as our state grows, there are those times that are peak. And for you, that really runs about 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM. It's not the same for every jurisdiction. It varies. But those are the peak times for your emergency calls. We think that that's good for you to know as well when you're looking at, you know, looking at resources and locations and other aspects. We do a lot of work with the GIS system. We use a state-of-the-art model to determine station location. And the reason it's so viable is it looks at many different aspects. It looks at the call volume, but it looks at the population. It looks at the historical demand. It will look at the land use, what's the heights of facilities that are being used today, what might be there in the future through your planning components. So we did quite a bit of work with the GIS system, and you have a robust system here in Burlington to be able to do that. We look at such things as your engine coverage. What is the engine coverage needed? And we use the ISO standard. You appear to be commended and congratulated for achieving your ISO one rating. But when we look at the ISO standard, what's covered within engines? And you can see the colors there. We just described what that is. And then the next one will show you what your ladders look like in Burlington, too. And so all the ISO pieces are part of the model, the station location model as well. In other words, we want you to continue to do well with ISO, continue to maintain the level that you have. And the model takes that into consideration. We look at those areas that start being problematic. Where are those located? Obviously, times of day, location, why are those, you know, being a little bit more problematic in reaching those standards? So when we look at those resources and we look at your current deployment, as we showed earlier, your first unit response overall in Burlington is strong. But getting that necessary number of people to address a structural fire, house fire, a significant incident that occurs does take a longer period of time. You'll see a term here called an effective response force or ERS. That just means the number of people that it takes to safely operate at an event. And so we start looking at those. And then you're really able to start seeing some of the areas that present some challenges as you move forward. We look at also the development. Anything that we were provided with, this is potential development, this is planned development. We start looking at where residential units, where commercial units. The model will take housing units or commercial units and be able to project how many more people will come from that development based upon how it is zoned and planned. And then what's looking to be the workload? What's the additional anticipated workload for the city of Burlington Fire Department as they address those calls? And then we'll look at not only the projected number of people, but how many additional calls that you might have. So those blue dots is an example, represent the 34 residential projects and 79 commercial projects that we provided with. And that's going to translate into about 9,000 additional people and about 2,000 additional incidents per year for your fire department. Now, we don't, some of those may not, we don't always know the time, right? But we take the best information that is available and put that into the model so that it is predictive as possible moving forward. So we start comparing, well, what's your current density? What's your population in the future look like? Where are those changes? And I'll note in this particular area, if you start looking further west, you'll see that the population demographics begin to change based upon some of that development. A little bit in the northeast as well, some of that development changes. So we look at the current and we look at what the projected development and population will be in the future. We start looking at what we call a heat map. This is where incidents are occurring. So this one over here on the left is currently, this is where your incidents occur at. And the warmer colors represent a higher call volume. And the cooler colors or green colors, a lower call volume. So when you look at the current level and the future level, you'll see that they begin to also change a little bit based upon the projections that we were provided with and the planned development. Some of them are already under construction, others that are in the process. But as you start looking at that, it helps you identify how your demand may shift or your populations potentially could shift. All of those are important factors when you look at a fire station, which you hope to last 40-plus years. It's a very long-term, it's part of your infrastructure, it's really part of your long-term infrastructure for the city. So you want to place those in the longest viable locations possible. And we do look at that land use risk. So this is a factor that goes into the equation as well. It may not be developed at all today, but if it's designed to be an industrial, commercial area, that weighs a little heavier than a residential area or an open lane area as well. All of that data is compiled by the GIS system into this type of model. And it kind of looks like a honeycomb. It's looking at each little section of the city. And each of those sections will get a different numeric rating. It's just the way the GIS model works. But it really helps us begin identifying where stations are needed. And so it's called a VRI, or vulnerability risk index. And it uses this grid. And that grid really helps to paint a picture of some of those needs. And this chart shows you down here kind of how that varies. It can be as low as a, you know, very low score of three, it can be as high as 15. And so this starts to kind of paint that picture of all those factors coming together. So it is a way to look at a level of service because this is the coverage that you provide when you take all of those pieces into place. ISO is certainly a way to determine that. When you look at a standard of cover, that's a way to determine service levels. Using VRI is the model that's used to determine your station location piece. And so this vulnerability risk index really helps to be able to do that. And it looks at everything comprehensively. That's the takeaway I hope you have today is it's not just one area, it's all of those areas together. That higher the VRI score, the higher the level of service. It's desirable to be at a 90%. That's ideal. Communities across our state are striving for that. Some might be there, many do not or not. But it's a goal. It's a part of continuous improvement. How do we get closer and closer to that 90%? That's an ideal situation. And so the VRI score helps us to determine that. So in looking at this and giving some overall analysis, we're trying to offer you some ideas to plan for the future. So if you follow any of the costs post-COVID on fire apparatus, if you follow any of the cost post-COVID in construction, fire stations included, as well as others that you're familiar with, that's increased significantly. It's averaged about 13% a year is the average cost increase going back pre-COVID, post-COVID. So it's really gone up significantly. So we want to try to give you information to look ahead and point into some areas that we think would be beneficial for you to consider as the city continues to grow. One of those areas is west, further west in the city. If you look at that area west of your current Station 6, that demand is showing in that model a continued peak. Station 6 has built a tremendous void and been very, very effective. But as it continues to grow west, that need continues to grow as well. The model ran a location and we looked at, well, is there any city property close to that location? And there was. And so that VRI score difference from the computer's optimum to the property that is sitting on the property was only a 1% difference. So that's, we think it's important to recognize. If you choose to do something there, your current city property could provide an opportunity to be very, very close to compare and to purchase additional property. Also, we have noted for you some potential with the airport. You'll see that the center of Burlington has some gaps between the Holly Hill Mall Station and Downtown Station. There's some gaps in different places. And so one model that we have seen as the best practice in North Carolina is looking at is opportunities where you can have a fire station that serves a structural side, emergency medical side, but also supports the airport. And so I think in your material, I gave an example here, you'll see it in a moment, of a great model with Monroe that they're using, but there's others across the state as well. We've done some work for Hickory and others in Concord and other places that are using that dual-purpose model. But considering that moving forward with the continued growth and development with the airport, we think that's something that you should be aware of. And that helps with some of that coverage between Stations 1 and 4. Doesn't take all of that into consideration, obviously, but it does help with that gap. We put on your radar also a need in the northeast portion of the city. If that development continues or if there's additional development, the model flagged that particular area as an area of future concern. And so we just encourage you to keep an eye on that as additional development is needed or requested in that area of the city. And then we also made some recommendations of opportunities that you may have to service some peripheral areas in the city. We chose to do that. It takes some collaboration with Almanzt County. But we gave some models and examples of where that's occurring across the state very effectively. And it helps to offset some costs in these areas as well. So that's an opportunity we think is there for Burlington and Almanzt County to look at some of those areas. So we kind of focus on each of these. There's four pieces that we would say we hope you'd have takeaways with today. That westernmost part of Burlington, again, the area right at Springwood Park provides an opportunity. Currently, you're doing a contract with Witzit in that area. So the model places the station need in that area. And again, the difference is virtually, virtually no difference in the ideal model and using current city property, only about a 1% differential. So we note that really first on your list. Second, we look at the central area, the gaps that are created between Holly Hill Mall and Downtown. Some of that could be potentially modified with a slight relocation of Station 4, a portion potentially could. But you also have to, you don't want to create another gap. So the model looks at opportunities. And we can run that model really at any time and be able to provide feedback to Chief Lawrence and to you as to what that, another location might be able to look like using that VRI index. But we note the gap. I think that was there in your last evaluation. And this model ran new data and updated data, and it put the same area really identified again. The third area that we would note to use is that northeast area. And that's just really as development continues up in that section of the city, at some point, that area will be an area of interest as well. And we want to make sure that you know that moving forward, too. And then the last, we mentioned the airport and Almanzt Road. Again, some of those gaps, having resources central to help fill some of those gaps and assist those around because, again, your first unit response time overall is pretty good. It's when you're really looking, how do we stack up when we're looking to send that effective response force? And so we give an example, this is Monroe's, as I mentioned earlier. But we looked at something in the area of Almanzt Road and Grand Oaks Boulevard that could service the airport as well as service geographical area of the city and be able to provide that service. And we hope that there would be federal funding to help with that. We like to come with suggestions and ideas for funding. We know that's a challenge in all 500 of our municipalities in the state. So that is a potential. Several in the state can speak to that better than I. But we think that that is something worthwhile to look at. And with that, that's a very high-level overview. We hope your takeaways are, there's four areas that are of interest. And as you think about planning and future development, keep an eye on those four areas. And there are options and ways to address each of those. So with that, I'll be glad to take any questions you might have.
What is the cost of a new station, this thing?
Most that we are seeing across the state is a $10 to $12 billion range overall. It depends on the number of square feet. I'd say those stations are in the 10,000 to 15,000 square feet range. That's going to require about three acres of property roughly. And there are a couple of options. You can pursue a design build model. That type of model, a little less expensive, traditional construction, a little more expensive, but approximately.
And that's not including new trucks, though?
No, sir. Trucks, literally since before COVID, today, fire agents have doubled in price. And I think Chief Lawrence will validate that. Everywhere I go, that's a significant issue for fire services, municipalities, and counties.
So the six minutes, 54 seconds, does that, does that include medical and?
That's all, all emergency calls. So we filter out non-emergency and just look at your emergency calls. That's all emergency calls.
So some of those, you're talking about all necessary services that are there. Other stations or other equipment that have to respond. What percentage of our calls would be greater than the initial response?
So you're coming in for that six minutes, 54 seconds, you know, 90% of the time. We would really look at the six minutes, 20 seconds is the standard that you got.
But it's just 13 minutes or whatever it was before we're fully?
Right. And that's really going to be primarily on fire emergencies because you need to assemble 18 people together to deal with a working structure fire. So it takes longer with the current staffing model that Burlington uses. It takes more pieces of equipment and it takes longer to get them there. But that first unit really is a very strong response overall. When, you know, we've done numbers of these across the state, that's really a first year response is pretty strong. The full complement, that ERS, that emergency response or effective response force, that one is a little longer.
And if we take contractual agreements like we have with Witzit, does their response time factor into ours? Is that calculated?
So we look at, we looked at all the incidents. So if Witzit answered a call, we looked at that incident. In other words, whoever responded to that is what we look at. If it's an automatic aid agreement, then that should be included. We only looked at emergency calls and we looked at who actually responded. A mutual aid response, meaning we're in trouble, we need help, those are not counted. The automatic aid is. And that's consistent with contracts.
The contractual agreement is the one I would be most concerned about versus a mutual aid, yes?
Yes.
In reference, Chief Lawrence, in reference to the Western Lakeford fire the other night, with the numbers and the other night, with the numbers that he's presented tonight, the first and then the others, being accurate for that fire?
Yeah, I mean, that fire, as far as personnel and the scene took, the equivalent of a second alarm fire. We had all but two fire apparatus left in the city while we were trying to deal with that alarm that night. And I don't have specifically, you know, we're lucky to have a fire station right near Grand Hopeville. So that was the first response and notified the rest of the team that we certainly had an issue going on. And the other were coming from downtown and other places. So our response there was good, but it did take all the devots of two of our fire apparatus out of the city to handle that.
Did we have any mutual aid on that?
We did not. We had that ourselves.
So when something like that happens, do the other stations that have not responded, do they rotate?
Yeah, we have a standard policy that when we have an event like that, where headquarters in that area, the center parts of the city is left vacant, then one of the outlined companies like Station 4 will come to headquarters and come. We had to just put a consent into the city so they can take any additional calls.
And the previous study we had did show that 4 needed to be relocated. That was not the best location for that. Now, going from memory a little bit, but it was, the desired location would be, I guess, a little bit more northeast than where its current location is. Is that kind of the same mentality to not create another gap?
Yeah, I mean, we didn't evaluate the moving of Station 4, but there is certainly a gap between Station 1 and Station 4. I think in the previous study, it had a location around South Club.
Yeah.
Was the primary location and Station 4 should be considered for a move. We can certainly have those, that analysis run to see if a move to a different location, how that changes the matrix, if you will, and to ensure that that creates additional gaps. What study this time?
Finding three acres in that area would be difficult.
Yeah, I mean, I think just in, just thinking through this, we've got some pretty solid solutions with a couple of sites. Springwood Park, partnership with the airport potentially. The others would probably likely require purchase of property. Really while we're having this conversation, so we can start thinking that way and be ahead of the curve to get things in that direction.
You mentioned Springwood. Are you talking that onsite or additional property?
We haven't evaluated that. I do know that there is, there are a couple of parcels that would square off, that are not current city property, that would square off as Springwood property, that would be a nice fire station location directly on Witzit Park Drive. I have not had any conversations with Tony to see what space looks like, the program looks like at Springwood Park City or something of that nature.
Or the property across the street of Springwood?
Somewhere in that area.
And the scenarios listed, they are your recommendations as far as some of the different scenarios?
Those four are those that we would say that US policymakers and decision makers need to be aware of. Those are those locations that really deserve the highest level of attention.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one last question, this is taking a little bit of a break about that. You know, actually, that's a very comprehensive point. Very, no different from you. prioritizing the whole big picture now. In the reality of a long-term view, basically the same here now at some point in time, there probably need to be multiple stations potentially constructed, which very seldom is ever done in a particular time due to just the cost process. So this would be something that probably could go over a period of time in terms of when a station is built, when a station is open, and then the timeframe will start again with a second potential station, depending on the growth of the community. So the other thing I asked you is, if we were wanting to the southwest, say the Highway 614, and then the McIntosh development is continuing to grow much that way, what happens in terms of if the growth indeed begins to continue and comes palest to the state of Gilbert County? Does that relationship then change at all between Burlington and Gilbert County? Or you mentioned, you mentioned Springwood. And if Springwood possibly could cut something like that out in matching in terms of getting that area to the gap?
Yeah, specifically the EC61 group is certainly a challenge for us. The site of Danex, most recently, is about 4.9 miles from Station 6 with an interstate, down the interstate to that area, almost outside of our ability to serve that. We have had to become creative to create. We don't want to jeopardize our ISO rating. That is a priority of ours is to make sure we maintain that ISO class one rating. Certainly our response time, our ability to provide service to these areas are important with that. So we have, for the first time, had to provide fire protection to the EC61-sourced properties, going to a relationship, working on a relationship with Gilbert County, to provide some fire resources as well as City of Greensboro, who has fire resources at Rockland Period. So they were just trying to find the best solution to provide fire services at when that project builds out. Because we don't have a fire station.
Thank you. Well, if we did something in that area, that would largely have gained an agreement with Witzit.
It would.
And what is that, 60,000 years of drilling?
Yeah.
Give or take. So, I mean, that's not, that's a pennant compared to the investment that you got to make to get on a going. But the growth potential there too, if you think about kind of some of the agreements, some of the, certainly the water agreements that we have with Wrightwood in that area, that at some point in time, that could become the city of Burlington, which even though you're at Springwood, that may necessitate the need for Witzit again in that direction. Is that right? So where Springwood would be focused more in between 6 and there and then south.
Yep.
Witzit would take that area if we came to some sort of an agreement. So that is the most critical area that I saw in reading through this, that based on our growth orders, that's the one that's going to need most attention. And there are a few options there, but they still are going to require some city investment.
And one thing to consider there is that first unit rival. Your first unit rival times overall aren't good today. The further you go west without a station there, it can begin to affect your first unit rival. Earlier, I noted that there are opportunities to exist to service on incorporating the area with Alamance County at the same Kennedy Center for Gilbert County as well. Do you think Gilbert County would be able to do that?
You know, it's a possibility. There's certainly some conversations about fire service in Gilbert County. And, you know, I've sent through presentations by Greenberg Fire Chiefs about what their goal is and their growth in Gilbert County. Certainly, they see Burlington as an agency that's moving into Gilbert County. So, you know, everybody's kind of understanding that the growth that's happening in those areas, how are we going to address it? Now, I'll just, I'll just suppose by saying, you know, our goal with this is to ensure that, you know, that we're able to provide ethical service in the city of Burlington, no matter where you are, right? We want to be able to get to your emergency and provide you the best service that we can. And to be able to do that, for our folks, to be able to do it quickly and safely, we have to have our assets in the right places, right? So this is just an evaluation of that to see how we can get that 90% of BRI score to provide that little service that we want to provide.
Any other questions? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Oregon. Thanks for your service. Appreciate it.
Our next item, V, is City Park Master Plan. At this time, we'll recommend that as our recreation parks. Mr. Ted.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's a pleasure to be here. Just a few comments about City Park. This is a master plan that we just concentrating on City Park and doing, you know, City Park is our oldest park, one of our largest parks, and it's pretty much in the exact center of town. So it serves the whole community. And it certainly has, it's the most used park we have and it has the most amenities in it for residents. So it's very important to us and what we call our flagship park. So everything else rotates out of City Park and other areas. So we're very happy that we got the chance to do this master plan. And I want to introduce Graham Smith. He's from Sykes Collaborative, Birmingham, Raleigh, and has a lot of experience in this region of North Carolina. And he's also done a lot of work in the city of Danville. So really, really well known in this particular part of the state. So we've had a lot of input from different groups in the city. We make presentations to the New Leaf Board. And New Leaf is paying for half of this stuff. So we want to thank KGN, New Leaf, for helping support this and have been very active on it in the money part and inactive in the development and planning. Our Recreation Commission has seen this or a presentation a couple of times. And then we had, last Monday night, we had a public input at the Carousel Building where the people came in and just were able to look at the plans and talk with the designers and so forth. That was very qualitative too. So we've got a lot of input on the plan getting to this point. And our plan right now, Graham's going to present the plan right now. And hopefully, if everything's okay, we'll be back on the October 7th council agenda for the council to accept the plan. And if you have questions, we're certainly, I know I am, Graham, we're glad to answer any questions as we go along. So Graham, welcome to the seat.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, council members. Happy to be here. It's been a really good nine months kind of working through this process. Been very grateful for the time with staff and the New Leaf Society. And you can see here that kind of the key stakeholder group that was, that was driving this process. And so this stakeholder group is not a small group. And it was, and we met probably six or eight times. And we'll go through kind of that process. But it was encompassing from various. Dog, that's good. Flight of the mayor's sick, silent shirt.
Everybody's had some great rain talks, right?
It was, it was not, it was not a small group. But the beauty of it was the group was comprehensive, right? So we had transportation and landing and stormwater and various levels of the Recreation Parks Department. So a lot of different feedback. So we're going through this process. You guys have the full report, something I've paid us in front of you. As Tony said, the goal would be, you know, if there are any questions, comments that come out of that and or the smaller kind of condensed 25 slide version here, definitely let us have them. We also have on our team, besides being a last architecture firm, we have an architecture firm, R&amp;D, out of Durham. They've done a lot of work in the Burlington, Graham, and Alamance area. They also have a lot of experience in renovations. So we were really excited to have them here. They did a lot of the building assessments. And then Sun Gage Designer, who does a lot of hydrology and floodplain mapping with Little Alman's Creek running through the site. We're excited to have them onboard as well. So early on, we set some master plan goals. Some of these were kind of the mandates coming out of the BRFQ, right? The city realized that they were trying to sort out, City Park does a lot of things for a lot of programs and a lot of activities and a lot of people. It's known for a lot of reasons. But yet, how do you create a sense of place? How do you ensure some kind of consistency or cohesiveness? Their signage package that's happening, they're starting to do that, which is really, really great. It's kind of a branding package. But wanted to create a sense of place with the plan. Wanted to be intentional with some of our land use movements, some of our future thoughts about amenities and things. Wanted to really determine where the programming should exist and where it should not exist and what programming should exist. Once again, City Park has served a lot of different uses, serves a lot of different program needs. Maybe it should serve different ones or maybe it should serve, you know, those in a more enhanced manner. We wanted to enhance connectivity. We certainly know it's surrounded by some significant roads. And yet, there are some challenges internal to get from one place to another. So we wanted to look at that. We had the opportunity with City Park and the site that it is to improve some ecological health there. We have floodplain, there's some opportunities there with the West Woods and some of the former landfill, we could possibly revisit the ecological approach. And we wanted to expand upon popular assets. I do believe that came from this table here. The idea that looking at, could we expand the train tracks? Could we improve the amusement experience? Could we enhance the idea of what people, when people think of City Park, particularly outside the city, going to county or north of other places, they think of City Park as an amusement area. So how do we really expand on the asset that City Park has done before? So those were our driving goals throughout the whole process. Process started in winter '25 and then worked through an analysis phase, worked through the spring conceptual planning, worked through the summer where there was some master plan refinement. And as Tony noted, our last meeting just a week ago was the community open house. So there was kind of a stage from December all the way to last week. And then there were various stakeholder meetings that we had throughout this process with the group. I will note that prior to this plan, the city had done a system plan, right? So we weren't trying to go backwards and evaluate the whole system. And this is only site specific for Master City Park. We also had a lot of stakeholder feedback. So we didn't open the community feedback loop up until the end when we had some ideas to put forth. We weren't opening up and saying, hey, what do you think? Because the city had got a lot of data over the last year and a half on the system plan. We know the existing conditions here. We're starting to see some of the train track crossings, some of the road crossings. But in general, there's some floodplain stuff in this area. The amusement area is up at the top. You can kind of see the two circles, the new Carousel House, the existing Carousel House, or the older Carousel House, the YMCA up there. And then the really active area where Pickleball has been built down nearby, the senior center. We did all sorts of analysis, historic analysis, leaned on past kind of oral histories a little bit, but did a lot of desktop research. So it's kind of one of the ways we do that is going through the aerial photos. We have a whole other collection of photos. We kind of shortened it for you, kind of showing that in the kind of in the 50s, it starts to define itself. And by 2024, it's very well defined as you know it today. Although the pickleball courts are not finished and I thought that they were finished, so. But also acknowledging the landfill did occur there in the, basically in the early, in the 60s essentially. So knowing that the landfill happened, the softball field is 2, 3, 4, and 5 bar. And so that is a significant element. Fields, recreation play, lights, fences, structures, things are on, unopened landfill over there. Looked at some connectivity. And this is one of the things, you know, as park planners and the city staff and you guys, as residents who use this park all the time, certainly acknowledge that getting into City Park's probably not that hard. Figuring out how to get to where you want to go is another thing, right? So the idea that open up road was closed off, understand why. Certainly, you get to the senior center, but you can't get to anywhere else. You get to the kind of aquatic center, but you can't get to the senior center in your car. You certainly could walk, this is a vehicular study. You get to the amusement area and you don't realize there's a whole rest, there's another 78% of the park, right? So there's different ways of just kind of understanding what a park experience is and what it's not and maybe how it's frustrating as a visitor. Looking at pedestrian connectivity, some of the routes through the park. When we had a community open house last week, a lot of the feedback was getting into the park. It was about getting across Church Street, Main Street, was the future of Meven Street, things like that. Like, how do we get into the park safely from pedestrian standpoint? So that was kind of nice to hear because we felt it, but we didn't, we didn't have a lot of resident interaction to that community open house. We looked at a lot of the internal pathways. And, you know, obviously, the main greenway here on the section by the apartments is a great path. But yet, there's not kind of a main circuitous route organizational structure to the north side where the amusement area is. So we wanted to think about that. We were tasked with looking at parking. So this is one of the studies, quick studies. You have nearly 900 spaces currently. And one of the requests was, can we study expanding parking? Because. Because certain events really do push the limits of parking. So how can we study get more parking? But at the same time, how can we maybe de-stress some of what happens on Overbrook Road, particularly this section here? The section over there on Overbrook is already built as a parking lot, this is just built as a speedway, right? So it definitely has, has, for community events, it is, it is parked, right? So parked on both sides, the asphalt's very useful, but how can we work with that? And how can we possibly look at putting some more parking inside the park itself, those community events? Floodplain is a big element here, 31% of the park is in the floodplain. 14% is in that floodway. So the floodway isn't in that fill zone, the area where it's really dangerous to, to impact. And you, the floodplain is more workable in a way. We have some restrictions, and the restrictions are on the lower reaches of the creek, but they impact the upper part of the park, right? So as the, the restriction here at Meven Street or the restriction here at Overbrook, they're minor, but they do impact the floodplain. The biggest impact on the floodplain is actually the fill soil, the old landfill, basically. Didn't used to just sit like this as a cliff. It was, it's filled, right? It's filled up with soil, and it was kind of filled as a cliff to the creek, right? So by doing that, creating that edge over there, it doesn't allow the creek to breathe, doesn't allow the water to flow, keeps it in a very contained vertical column. And, and doing so, that restricts them, the more restricted flow is downstream, the more flooding you have upstream, right? So it was less about the bridges and more about that long line around, that purple line there that restricted the flow. So we started looking at that. If we moved that line back 50 feet, we could start to reduce some of the flooding in here by six inches. We remove it back 125 feet, we could maybe move certain areas, we could take certain areas out of the floodplain, so the water would reduce in the upper reaches. So, so manipulation we can do with the floodplain on the southern part that allowed us to start to think about how we made master plan on the site. We also organized the site into kind of what we, we had to grasp the scale of the site, right? It's a big site, a lot of things going on. We started to zone it out a little bit, say the amusement hub is critical, kind of that central park area is zone one, the West Woods kind of has a passive feel, has a beautiful style to it, has, but it has trees and canopies. Zone three is really active, right? You've already, you've built out that, that's where everybody goes for certain activities, very specific sports activities, programmed activities. And zone four is the fields, are the fields, but they're also still landfill. Of note, though, there's tiny sliver buildings, or city buildings, very close to the landfill, or very, on some old landfill property, very close to the floodplain, tough to get access to, those are the maintenance facilities and some storage facilities. So this is just an example of building assessment, we did, in the appendix, we have a water collection of these. So for each building, not each building, but the key buildings, we evaluated whether there was a health, safety, welfare risk, whether there was a context challenge, whether it fit the right context, whether the specific use was, was correct. We made a general recommendation whether or not it should stay, be relocated, be rehabbed. So in this situation, we talked about the historic carousel house as needing, it, it's got some real great value, and we, we would suggest it being altered for a new use in the place. I'll touch a little bit on, yeah, the conclusion is, none of the buildings had their health, health, safety, welfare risk, so that's a good thing. Yet, several of the buildings are, some of the two shelters over in the West Woods, concessions ticketing building, which just got flooded, two feet of water. They're not located in the best functional place in the park. How do you not get the tickets when I walk in, when I know where I'm going, things like that. And their shelters are not used. Some of them aren't in the best locations, or functionally in a spot that's going to serve the community moving forward. The good thing is, none of them are, are at risk of, of, you know, collapse or anything like that. There's some ADA challenges, but minor. There's some pavement that certainly should be repaired and replaced, the completion of materials, as we talked about from day one, are you in City Park or do you not? What is that, what is the vibe of City Park? What's the character of City Park? It's a lot of different things, because it's built, been built over time, so. This is the concept plan, the master plan. And, and kind of a quick summary, anything, this is all fuzzy here, but anything with the gray dots and has an E in front of it would be an existing element. Anything with the blue dots would have a P in front of it, and those are proposed. In a lot of ways, I'll start with the easier one on this, on the south side here, parking place, zone three. We're talking about adding this as an access road, just connect the road here, enhancing the pedestrian connection here, maybe a small concession building there, adding some stormwater treatment devices, but keep, and some senior garden, keeping the improvements there, rather simple. The one big move is the potential capture of that corner, if you currently own it, it's just, it's woods, potential moving of maintenance down to that corner. That's still certainly, if we were to have to put maintenance onsite, that's proven to be the most preferred location, given a lot of stakeholder input, given our analysis from a, a site mining standpoint, overall, I do believe we would say that should be moved offsite, but that's, I think, just in general, if we had to find a spot, we've, we definitely tested it in six other spots also. We went around, went around the park with that. That's also sized for the whole park system, I'll just tell you that. So that's not ju, so that's, because that's what's housed there now. So just to frame a reference, that's not just what is required to maintain that park, that's, that's for the whole system, because that's what's happening in the buildings currently here. When we get over to the West Woods, we wanted to expand the train track. Currently, the train track is about 1,200 meter feet. Pulling Park is about 3,400 feet. This track and these double dashed lines going all the way around is about 5,000 feet. So there are multiple variations of that, it can be shortened if we wanted to kind of take it at 3,200 feet or something like that, but we wanted to kind of test out what we could do. And we had our engineer look at that and kind of keep it on a consistent grade, and we got to close to a mile, which we're pretty excited about. Now, once you do that, it does change the, you know, you have to fence certain areas off, so you have to control how pedestrians cross that, but that's certainly doable, and you can control where they do that. And then with that, we would keep the trees in that area, we'd enhance the pathways in that area, so that still has the character of the West Woods, which is very exciting to us, give you the value of the canopy there. The big, the big new sign is right here on the corner.
So that's new elevation, the elevation with train is now.
Yeah.
That's, that elevation can be taken by that particular train with, with the, going up the hill back to that area?
Yeah, it currently does. It heads out this way, it makes a small loop, basically. So it could be, it would have to be enhanced, we're kind of moving it up the hill a touch. We're sliding it up towards parking lots to the touch. We're getting it out of the floodplain. But that's, but that's also imagined as an open air platform, a loading platform. It's not where the train would sleep at night, we're imagining the train sleeps in one of this tunnel or that tunnel, and that's more of a maintenance shed. So that's kind of a, an open area, if it were, if it were, it'd end up closer to the floodplain, still master plan level, so we're pretty high up on the concept, but that's more of a platform, a loading spot.
So the pulling train is on, basically on the same elevation all the way around it for the water, for the most part?
For the most part, yeah, yeah.
So we could get about 2% grade, 2%, so grade to go up, or can't go any higher. Not, cause the power of the train and the engine is, it gets over 2%, the wheels start spinning on the cars, and they don't have any grip, so it won't go anywhere.
2% is somewhat noticeable, because that's an ADA parking space, right? So, but that is, is there. But yet, at 5,000 feet, you can get a decent amount of vertical at a 2% grade, so. So that is one of the kind of points of that, the idea that, and we have some enlargements, kind of working back towards the amusement area, we're talking about that train platform, talking about the concessions and ticketing building going our way, right? So we're thinking about that, thinking about the existing carousel building, starting to become possibly concessions building, adding the new gateway, and I'll add, let me see it. So this is the enlargement of that. This is the existing carousel, it would be turned into a concessions building, these are some of the amusement, that's the playground, that's the new carousel building. This is a proposed new ticketing hub center, back to the idea of pulling park. You know where you're going, they built a gateway experience, you know where to get your tickets, whole idea that, it's a little bit like Disney as well, there's an in and an out, right? There's an approach to it, doesn't have to be fully fenced, but there's some intuitive notions to where to go and how to, how to access things. And then this is the train track coming through this area, we've talked about some fire retention devices in this area, we talked about some new rentable picnic shelters, some large group picnic shelters. Big moves here would be, that away center is gone in this, this picture, right? The other big move is Tony's office is gone. So these are, this is the 25-year roadmap, right? So once again, taking out things that, the parks office, Recreation Parks Office is serving the entire city, but it's set in one park, right? So trying to think about what is the future of Recreation Parks, what is the future of maintenance for the city, right? Maybe it doesn't belong inside one park, right? And that's a data, so that's kind of what we're, oops. Maybe I've got some of this backwards, oh, it didn't blow up, we took the bulbs out, that's one, that was one second. So, so in this idea over here, that is the proposed new, this building up here, what Dog Park is, that's the proposed new administration building. The idea that's public facing, it's on the street, people can come in and register for programs and or interact. There's also could be space built for, to replace the that away center in that situation. So in doing so, though, all of that starts to reopen, starts to, starts to open up the center core. So we add a lot to the amusement area. We've also proposed that Field One becomes a community lawn, right? So that's a big move, but that's where a lot of your community activities are happening today. That's when things happen, and that's where community, the community does gather, so we're just playing into that. The idea of enhancing that, creating a bigger amphitheater, a large, a space for larger events than the one that's currently in the woods, creating the concrete, the indoor paved seating areas and walkways, having this amazing lawn in the middle. And so if you look at the access, the axes coming from the amusement area, we build proposing a new sightline straight through the tree. If you stood there today and you looked across that brick walkway, that double brick walkway with the planters and stuff, it goes straight across, you'd see a home plate of field lawn. So the idea wants to get us to play that up and draw, make the park that much bigger, like the central part of the park that much bigger by, by creating this community lawn, putting a, a bridge through there and making the visual cues really, really work. So then that becomes the hub of the park, we're expanding it, we just do a little, the amusement space, right? We're talking about a little bit. Then the last big move, you see that we talked about expanding the floodplains, that's what some of this dash work is in here. So we're thinking about, this would be a longer term phase for, or zone four component, because you have a landfill, you've got a regulated stream, you've got some environmental issues, you also have some opportunity for some better funding or some state funding, some other things, but it takes a while to make something like that kind of happen and fall into place. You also, you see that there are softball fields here, right? So that's another longer term thing. We're proposing that the city discontinue the use of those fields on the landfill for just money, liability, all of those things. And we had a lot of feedback from stakeholders and the community, very positive about that, but yet, that's, that's a, we understand there's a complicated decision there. But the thought process is, this gives this park back to a passive experience, walking paths, native meadows, these are still turf pockets, so you can do tiny dot soccer, you can do ultimate frisbee, you could do some pickup games, people still have a place to gather, Tony still has a place to program, it's just not programmed for softball. And you're also not maintaining fences, not maintaining lights, things like that that are vertical, on a landfill, it's soft soil, right? So there's some challenges for that, putting money into that condition over time. And then if possible, if we move the floodplain back a little bit, so we started to put the slope over here instead of right along this line, then that allows the creek to breathe, allows that floodplain and that to get better, less of that part, or the park to be in the floodplain. So there's some wins in a lot of different ways. The last element I would note is, we talked about reconnecting Overbrook Road, leaving in the roundabouts, they're there, enhancing them in that they would, this is kind of complicated to see, but if you were to come out of here, the park's, this, this zone here, and you can make that left right now, which is a danger, it's kind of, you know, if we were to reopen this, that's not the best left you would make. So we're proposing a little traffic engineering with a little bit of a, a median there, and you would have to do the right turn, which everybody always has to do on the right, on the roundabout, so a little modification on the intersection. We also propose to take out the maintenance facility, so then all our trucks and trailers will have to navigate that roundabout, right? So that experience every day. So then you could, still people wouldn't fly through here, because you'd have to do the roundabouts and drive around, but yet, the idea that you couldn't get from one side of the park to the other without going back out onto the main roads and trap, you know, there's a lot of traveling that happens on the main roads if you're just trying to get to the other side of the park. Then we've talked about green infrastructure in the stretch of Overbrook Road, so some road dieting, both islands and spots where storms, there are a lot of stormwater slope, a lot of water running through this area, that's coming in here, coming in here to the park, so we could do some road diets in here and some things that we could capture stormwater, but also do some amenity stuff. And I'll show you maybe a few pictures. That's kind of, we didn't play architect, though, just showing you kind of the idea of the threshold, between the two carousel buildings, what the new amphitheater, community lawn could look like, and then what Overbrook Road could look like when it's, when it's controlled down a little bit, slowed down, put some shadows in for road, or for lights. These are all existing pictures, and these are just modified, just showing you what could be the condition. And we do have some conversation, if you would like to talk about some options at the YMCA site, if that's open for a conversation, if you want some options here. The one, last thing, with this, we did add about 200 parking spaces right there with Dog Park, the old one was, so with this concept of actually fly a long time ago, that we're trying to add, parking, we did give 200 spaces in that area.
That parking is served the amusement area pretty, pretty quickly.
What's that?
That parking will be convenient with amusement area.
It'll be very convenient, yes, exactly. I mean, that's one of the most, it's, you drive in, the amusement area, you're like, put on a spot, or, or like, how it gets to the other side.
And the big, big events, we do, parking's, or used up on a big event, all the streets around the area, and so that'd be a little improvement, too.
Looked at a lot of information, sorry, so. There are enlargements of each of these four zones in the report as well, and then there's a phasing plan in the report, too. And the phasing plan, we didn't make priorities, we just said, these are phases you could, that are bite-sized spaces, right? A few of them line up with others, like you were to do, I mean, anything related to, you know, you'd have to move the maintenance before you did the field, you know, before you did any of the floodplain work, you'd have to figure out a home for maintenance, right? There's certain things, but other ones, renovating the carousel house into concessions doesn't require the thoughts of, you know, doesn't require another phase to land, per se.
Pretty restructured and, and the general maintenance movement would open up an area for a nature center, too.
Yeah, that's what the double squares are right there, showing, let's imagine as a, as a nature center kind of up here overlooking the creek, because the creek would be down a little bit, so.
So eliminating five softball fields, where, where do they go? We don't know where they go, but they got to go somewhere. We can't, we can't lose that many fields without affecting our program, and especially our youth program. Adult program is not as near as strong as it used to be, where, where a lot of these games were played, but, hey, they are softball, but we lose, use them for a lot of youth activities now, too, so we, we have to replace those fields.
We have thought about the idea that a fourplex would be more efficient than the current five, I will say that, so maybe you replace the four.
A whole lot more concise versus spread out overall, that one.
There's limited effectiveness.
I walked out there and looked at the ball field, it's been three, four weeks ago. The, the sort of undulating ground out there, I mean, it's kind of dangerous.
It is, when you're chasing the ball and you're not watching where you stepped in there, you could step in a hole or, or suck in place and, you know, sprain your ankle, break a leg, hurt your knee, whatever, you know, but it's, it is not safe.
We put plenty of dirt out there over time, too.
Can't tell you how much dirt we put out there for the 56 years that I've been here, but it's done a lot.
Probably through three years. You start to see it in this photo, and we've updated that photo in the report, and you'll see it from the winter of 2025, so just this February, and you'll see where the, where the grass is green and where the grass is brown. There's, there's a spot where the grass is happy and wet in February, and when the grass is not, and it's gotten frozen, so. So it's kind of, it's, it's a really interesting way to be better. And the fence goes out and the fields do that, yeah.
Yeah, it was a little shocking to me how rough it was to have to really throw my snacks.
Yeah, it's the decomposition of the trash is out and Graham said a lot of dirt out there. Well, it's a lot of trash out there.
Yeah.
More than anything else, and it keeps decomposing and sinking. And unfortunately, the way they did that landfill, there were trenches and not covering the whole area with trash. So you have, and in the trench, you have the trash decomposing and the solid ground on each side of the trench. So that's why you get that washboard effect.
It's the same way when we were considering going out south, but the landfill out there to build a complex, you can't fix it, I mean, the way it is. It's just.
It's a massive question.
And also even if you go back towards that creek, you, because of the banks of the creek, when the creeks get deep going towards, uh, here, Medden Street.
You can see trash.
Yeah, it's in the banks of the, it's, it's just there, yeah.
So the premise is to put this on the agenda of October 7th for approval and then start discussions on prioritizing and.
And, uh, and a lot of these are going to be expensive issues if we do those. Some of them are lower cost, you know, we can look at those first. I will say, uh, New League Board has shown an interest in helping us improve the, what Graham calls the west woods, but I call it the passive part of the park, the wooded area, helping us upgrade that. And, uh, that could be something that can be done now. Some of these projects depend on several things happening, you know, like the ball fields. You can't do that work and do, find somewhere to move the ball fields. The connection of letting Overbrook Road be through traffic again, we gotta do something in the maintenance shop to get that opened up. So, so there's one thing or another, you know, that leads to something else.
That would be a referential project that you guys mentioned pulling apart. You know, they approved their map, their Park Master Plan, 1997. They're still working through, you know, seeing that to fruition, right? But yet at the same time, anything that happens on that site goes back to that as a reference and, you know, and or mends it, right? And says, okay, is this the guiding, but it's the guiding document for the city of Raleigh to make decisions about their core park, right? So this becomes, this becomes a guidebook, basically.
The big thing is we, if, if we adopt this on October 7th for the public, the general public, that does not mean on October 8th we're losing softball fields.
No.
Exactly.
It's a 25 to 30-year issue and our, and, you know, some of the things like the road that, uh, from the senior center parking lot, tennis courts going around the tennis courts and coming into the aquatic center, all that area, that could be something that could be done now or soon, and that would give a lot of connectivity to those two sides. Where, where if you're over on the senior center side or on the other, you gotta come out and go around and get back to the other side.
Yeah, there's some load hanging through, but there's definitely some 25-year plans in this, you know, it's not, that's not expected to happen overnight, so.
So Tony, what would that road go through? If you go from the Goodon Center, you got the tennis complex.
It'd go around the, uh, where the parking lot is now here. See, backs up to the tennis courts. He would go, go, inter out of that parking lot and go right around the, uh, between the tennis courts and the aquatic center.
There, there's a berm here and that would, there has to be retained. There would have to be a retaining wall, put into that, you know, to hold that berm back a little bit. So this kind of cuts through, but you're kind of just legging it between the corner of the tennis courts, launching off the end of this and then turning or going right by that existing shelter and then kind of popping out there at the kind of lineup of the existing parking lot.
So there's enough room between that shelter and those tennis courts for a road through.
It's not a big road.
That's a pretty nice space there.
22 feet park road, right? Just a two-way access from that.
We're gonna talk about something, the chief's gonna have to set speed trap up.
Hopefully, hopefully improve some access for this chief. Maybe some opportunities, um, as well as maintenance staff that's having to travel on roads to get through the, through the site as well as any visitor.
There need to be a number of spread speed laws in that.
Yeah, we have to do that, keep people from going too fast around there now.
Can you mention that there are not any priorities listed as a write-down? You don't have any priorities listed as a write-down, like what are you writing for?
Yeah, there are about 26 or 28 groupings of opportunities in the park. Kind of cost estimated and or this or that. But what, I mean, they're all individual, but they're not priority, they're not all together, so.
I would love to see that, just to think of the cost. How much would this cost?
It's in the back of the full document, so.
Do you have the full document?
Yeah, yeah, and there's a doc, there's a diagram to start that conversation and the, and then the appendix has some possible costs.
That's today's cost.
That's today's cost, 25, 25, yeah, exactly.
Having those priorities would give you a better, when you're looking at the full cost, I understand what you're saying, it's all in the back. But if we're gonna do over 25 years, like what is the cost for our first two or three steps?
And the reason we did it the way we did it is because we don't know your priorities. So we just kind of, that thing staff had geared us towards, hey, can you give us, can you give us a kit of parts, basically? And say, what would it take to do the carousel house and the concessions? What would it take to do the community lawn? What would it take to do that small connector road? And, and, you know, I think with, with you guys working together, we would able to say, let's grab A, C, and E, and we'll hold off and B and D for now or something like that.
So the parts, the improvements that did not require other things to happen, where there would be a single event improvement, the lowest cost could potentially be what you start with.
Yep, that's, that's correct.
That's how we've talked about it, but we didn't want to prioritize it for you, so.
One other thing, I'm not trying to make any decision from the council or push your end there. YMCA issue, we've all heard, heard the talk, and they have some issues at, at their building. Their swimming pool is on its last legs. I don't know how much longer it's gonna last, but they gotta do something about that. And, you know, there's been another talk. So that's, that decision has to come sooner than later because it could answer several of these other questions like moving the administrative building in that a ways, if, if we took over the wild in some form or fashion, that could house the offices and, and that a ways programs, which would open up a little more space up, up there next to Kitchen Street where he's got the buildings for, uh, to replace those. So, um, you know, I mean, I'm not saying it's gotta be made a bar or anything like that. I'm just saying if there's gonna be discussions about that, it needs to move on. So we, we know what else we can do.
Because we were pretty excited about in the long term, the idea that, you know, if that building does go away, we can, one, we can get train tracks across there, kind of scoop there. We can, we can enhance this idea of a main pedestrian spine. But we talked about the idea of teen activities being kind of underserved in an outdoor environment. So then we just kind of noted that, that purple is a teen zone. Is that, is that a ropes activity? Is that a kind of a programmed activity outdoors owner? Or is it more of a loose zone? And the teens are kind of the hardest group to, to run out of your space with. So we have some, and we have some spottography there. We've planned, there could be some really cool manipulation of the land there to provide for an older age group, so.
You know, the change of the ball field number one can be at the biggest impact long-term on this park that anything's been done there.
And that's, that's one of the simpler things, right? The land is right there.
That is the biggest thing to be done, believe me, in terms, that gives you an open amphitheater, quite frankly, with.
Really, we always, always have to do, convert that into a multi-use spaces. Just take down the fencing, ball field fencing, leave the lights so you can have nighttime activities. They're already in place, so we wouldn't have to do anything there. And just, you know, convert it over to a multi-use space instead of a ball field. So it's pretty, pretty simple and pretty, pretty inexpensive to convert that.
I would say it's inexpensive until you, you know, if, if, if you push the idea of an amphitheater, so the idea of an amphitheater building then becomes kind of a, you know, phase one, phase one A kind of thing. You say, okay, we can, definitely converting that land is very, very.
Well, that would be a much safer environment for events. Like I, I had a, somebody reached out to me that was at one of the events we have out there at the current stage within the last month or so, talking about how dark it was, maybe.
Yeah, and that's where you see the dark green, that's the stage area and, and, yes, we would.
And I would think it would make it simpler for PD as well for mass events, not being tucked up in those woods.
Yeah, it would, if, if a lot more room, a lot more could be served there. And with Grant, we got a dog park around the corner of Kitchen and Overbrook. And that, the dog park could move into that area, which would make it a lot safer access for owners and their dogs to get to without having to get out of the car or truck in, in traffic there on Overbrook at the dog park.
The other place being considered, was considered for dog park was kind of right here, a little closer to the park. So this is a plan at a very 40,000-foot level, right? So there's some flexibility and some of those nuances probably thought there's kind of control and you could create back there.
Look, nothing that it's a living plan, there's still some unknowns. But in context, it gives us pretty good maps. Everybody could put that being on the agenda for October 7th. That was good work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Definitely appreciate it. Grant, his, his team did a wonderful job on this plan.
All right, thank you, Adam. Next item, item C is Western Sports Flex Project Management and Design Build Delivery. This time we'll recognize Assistant Project Manager Rachel Hill.
Thank you. And I'm going to invite Chris Woodley to come on up and join us. We just wanted to give you a really quick update about some work we've done in preparing for, moving forward for Western Sports Flex and also to tee up an item that's on the agenda tomorrow night. So as most of you are aware, Fred Patrick, who's been serving as our part-time project manager for some time now, intends on retiring for real, second time, after the completion of the Paramount Theater project and the Mac renovation. So he's committed to us that he'd be there for those two projects in his part-time capacity. And he's just been wonderful guidance for us. But we really needed to get started on the Western Sports Flex project. And in lieu of Fred, we needed to find a solution for that. So we went out with an RFQ for a project management firm who could lead this project as if they were a staff member. Put together that RFQ, we got eight submittals. They're really strong submittals. Five of them were interviewed by the staff panel, which included Fred, myself, Bob Patterson, and Tony. And after the conclusion of those interviews, the coming group was selected. Chris Woodley is the vice president of that group. They have a strong municipal history. We liked a project manager who's dedicated to this project versus a VP and will be providing executive oversight. And it just felt like a really good fit for us and for this project. So I want to take the opportunity to introduce you all to Chris and if you want to say a couple more words about coming and what makes them and Nicholas a good fit for this project.
Yeah, um, I'll, I'll try to keep it brief. I mean, probably have several other items more important than listening to me. Again, thank y'all for having us. Thank you for selecting us. We look forward to partnering with the city and, and working hard to look after your best interests throughout this project. Coming Group has been in business since about 1996. Our roots in the Carolinas started in 89, back with Southern Management Group. And that's still pretty much, I was a part of that. My boss was a part of that. So our Carolinas team is still kind of that smaller tight-knit group that we find fits a lot of municipalities. Most of our work has been dedicated to municipal clients, much like yourself. Municipal and public, we do a lot of K-12 work as well. So, yeah, we're very excited to be a part of this. Nick Woodruff is gonna be our project manager that we assign. Nick's a bright, energetic PM for us. I think the city will really enjoy working with him. And of course, Nick has our support, my support throughout the course of this project and others as, as we may need it. But we're, we're really excited and look forward to it.
So we just executed the contract with Chris's firm, look forward to that. Kind of anticipating just three-year relationship, kind of getting started, moving towards the Western Sports Flex. Speaking of which, Chris and his team are taking the lead to draft a request for qualifications for design build firms, which will include programming of the facility, since we get to really nail that down, site selection, and then of course, the design and construction of the building. So with that, that's why I wanted to let you know that on your consent agenda tomorrow is a compliance summary for design build for Western Sports Flex. It's a statuteually required statement from council that goes over six items that the statutes lay out that you all have to affirm that the sign build is appropriate. That is that we have adequate, adequately and thoroughly defined the project requirements in our staff team and Chris's team at Coming Group feel confident that, that we can do that. But there are time constraints for project delivery and is long-funded, high-profile, with high expectations for delivery. We have to be able to ensure that a quality product can be delivered, again, with a professional firm on our side and so many staff has also delivered many similar quality projects. That our staff and consultants are experienced in design build, that is true. This will be our, our Recreation Parks Design Build project. That we will have good faith efforts to recruit and select small business entities, which we will do it through the RFQ. And finally, that we've done a cost benefit analysis in design, design build versus traditional design bid build. Because of increasing inflation, as we've talked about earlier tonight, time is of the essence and design build is driven to shorten timelines and also help kind of predict those construction costs since the design team and the construction team work together. So we've laid that out in your agenda packet. Happy to answer any questions before Chris can. We just wanted to make that introduction and give you an update on where we are with that project.
Any questions on people that?
So basically, right now, you're asking us for the consent to go ahead and start planning and to hire a consultant, not to relinquish or go ahead and cash in the 20 million for the sports place?
Well, at, at this point, we have hired the Coming Group. And our next step would be to do a request for qualifications for a firm that would be doing that site selection and design and eventually construction. So we'd be a two-part contract. We'll initiate working with them to do the kind of pre-construction work. And then we'll be at a price point on what the construction costs and that will come back to the city council to deliver it and move forward with it.
This gentleman's company is our Fred, our capital project manager for the city. Does that help? He's not, he's not, his company is not going to be doing the actual design.
Yeah, so it'll be the staff on condition since we'll be losing.
He's our, he's our eyes for the city.
Yeah, and I probably should have mentioned, our firm only does that. We only work for clients like yourself. We, you know, I'm an unlimited licensed general contractor. We don't do that work. We totally look after our client's best interests throughout, throughout the project.
Love that.
So let's have a standup.
Thank you. Next item D is the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, or CAPER. This time we'll recognize Michael Blair and Kimberly Center from EPRC. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilor. I've done this before. At the end of every fiscal year, which ends, or actually our fiscal year, which ends June 30th, we provide a report against systems called, I wish before. In this particular year, you look at it, you spend in the system about $454,000. $61,000 was public services, which are homeless shelters, other services to the long-term individuals and families. $76,000 admin was pulled out of administration. Relocation was, that's usually a rehab program for people that need it. $1,711. $92,000 was housing rehabilitation. That was on just 400 houses that money was spent, ran them up to code, foundations work, things like that. And then the rest was $223,000 was for public facilities. And that's any type of work that's done, like a homeless shelter, not, not the services, but like the, or parking lot or something like that. So that's really what the, uh, the CAPER has in it. Tomorrow would be a public hearing, which would be the end of the public comment period. So the, so the plan could be some end before the 28th, which is due every year. So. So does anybody have any questions on that or what we're doing here?
Everybody good? Any questions on that? All good? Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item, item P is voluntary contiguous annexation requests. There are several, so you don't need to go through all these. I'm the chief. Take the lead on all of it.
All right. I've lumped some of them together also, so it doesn't seem as bad. So the first item that is in front of you, this is a voluntary contiguous annexation request. The property is located at three-three-three-zero, I'm sorry, three-three-three-eight-three. Maple Hill, at the intersection of Gardner-Holt Road, Gardner-Holt Road across from Shamrock. This property was the subject of a TRC-approved site plan. And then flat for twenty-nine, single-family attached homes or townhomes. Shamrock is, this, this area here is within the existing city limits. So as a result of that, this area is contiguous to the city, city limits. So we are recommending annexation of the property to facilitate the future development. Included in your packet is a resolution that we have proposed for tomorrow night on the consent agenda to set a public hearing date for the October seventh, city council meeting. And just for context, this is a location of where the project is. You can see in the darker beige, this is the city limits in that color. And then the lighter beige is the ETJ, so city limits is right up against this property.
Where is, where are the apartments on the, when you're coming down Maple Hill Avenue? Shamrock is on your left and the apartments are on your right. It's already been built out. Is that called gray stone or something like that?
It's very popular there.
Right in here?
It's, it's north, north of the left.
In this area? So just in terms of context, this is Hanford here, where the split is where sheets. And then as you go down, you've got that newer storage facility with the, apart with the office building. And, and this property here is on the right-hand side. The area that we were talking about off of Bush Track previously, that's further south.
So if you go down that route, where are we not, where have we not annexed in terms of that whole area coming out here?
So the, the area that is within this beige, that is all ETJ. What we have been annexing most recently, this is White's Count Road here. So we had the distribution facility on the north side and then more recent flex buildings. Those properties were recently annexed. But you've got gaps in between some of the satellite annexation areas. And this is the city's corporate limits.
So it's fast, it's quickly becoming a pretty legitimate infill area.
Yeah, absolutely. I would say this, this area and southwest.
So those three parcels, do you set a date of public hearing tomorrow?
Yes, for a resolution to be set.
For October seventh?
Yeah.
Now, the property that are right here in the left of the color.
Sorry?
The property that are right along here beside Shamrock, here, there, and there.
Purple's?
Purple is Grant's corporate limits. The darker is their corporate limits and then the lighter is their ETJ.
And that's where we did a look down with more than seven hours ago. That agreement there?
Further south.
Further south?
It's just, it's just out of the area, the star.
And just for context, that's the TRC plan.
That was, everything's handled on the relationships, that resolution and that staff role. Okay.
Any other parking lists?
Good on those.
All right. The, the next several are all utility requests, but they are in front of you for your information. None of these are requests that, none of the first pack are requests that we're proposing for annexation. This is part of location and they all are for residential development where services already exist. The applicants basically submit a utility request form, whether it's sewer, or whether it's water, or whether it's both. And, and most of the time, ninety-nine percent of the time, is to serve a single-family detached home where they're already in process of the building permit and just needing services to connect. So the first one is off of Flora Avenue. And for context, this is Birch Bridge Road here. This is the conservation subdivision that was annexed into the city as a satellite annexation, just for context. And then, and then this is actually our corporate limits. So you see, there's quite a distance currently. That is why we're not recommending for annexation here, but we have recommended the utility request. I'm going to move forward to the next set. And I failed to mention, this is eleven-seventy-five Flora Avenue. Then the next set are all properties in a row off of Saint Regis Drive, which is not far from Flora, just north and west. Again, these are all for single-family residential connections. They're all adjacent to each other. They each have building permits for the single-family homes. And services exist, but because of their location being not adjacent or in proximity to the existing city limits, we are recommending that we defer the annexation for that period of up to twenty-one years. At any time during that twenty-one-year period, staff and council can go back and revisit whether or not there's additional infill and, and it makes sense to them annex those properties.
And does that go along with the dates of the property then, that agreement?
It's reported at the register of deeds, the annexation agreement. Any questions on these? So these are on for tomorrow's consent, just as an add-on. Lastly, regarding these, so we had four utility requests and you'll actually see another at the next work session for, again, single-family detached residential development. This, these, these series of properties are located at the intersection of sixty-two and West Old Blanco Road. There was a recent subdivision that created a series of these lots. There are, there is water and sewer already servicing this area. The city's corporate limits are actually a quarter of a mile in the south and also northwest. The city limits extend all the way up to the river in this direction. And then the corporate limits are just to the south, sixty-two. You also know these are some of the satellite annexations that you have recently in the past. So staff is recommending annexing these properties because of their proximity to the existing corporate limits. Any questions on this? So for these, we are requesting to set a public hearing date before the annexation, also on October seventh.
Good. Any questions? All good?
Okay. I'll be back in a little bit.
Our next item, next item F is a permanent street closure of West Melrose Drive and Riverby Drive.
This is actually Chandler Woods and the Vernic Firm is bringing this petition. We looked at it among the different, different apartments here in the city. This is stuff that was dedicated back in nineteen fifty-two, flat, Callaway Poly, Poly area, Aitres area. It's never been opened, the road's never been opened. And it's all owned by the Roger Hayes family, a daughter of theirs. And they're all coming together. They just want the two little ends to go ahead and close them because they've never been open, nobody's ever maintained them and all. And they just want to treat it as one, as one parcel there. So it makes complete sense. DOT's never accepted it for maintenance and got all property owners. Nobody's been denied any ingress or egress from the property. This satisfies sixty-eight, two ninety-nine, the statute. And they're asking to have a date of public hearing set for the twenty-first of October.
Okay. Any questions that are concerned on that? So that'll be on October twenty-first, correct?
Correct.
So on the consent agenda, tomorrow, this is the ten twenty-first. Okay, all right, good. Item G, Board's Commissioners Report. So, gentlemen, let me hear back again. For PNC.
So the PNC at their August meeting, they had two items on. The first one is, applicant is Almans County. This rezoning request was for the number one center, that is off of Plantation Drive. They are seeking to install a seventy-foot-tall telecommunications tower, only for their use. It's not for any kind of co-location or private use. Because of those uses, telecommunications towers specifically, this is defined as a major telecommunications tower. They are only allowed under RUDL through a conditional rezoning. So that is why you're seeing this request. It does not change the, anything else with respect to the configuration of the site or the building. It is strictly for the purpose of allowing the zoning to be able to install a tower on the property. It is consistent with the future land use designation of the area, which is business park like industrial. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend this item unanimously. And staff also recommends it consistent with option number one in the packet. We are asking for you to set a public hearing date for this as well on the October seventh council meeting. And can't really see it all that well, but this is the existing building. And the telecommunications tower is supposed to be located right in this area here. These are the conditions that were included on the plan that have been agreed to by the applicant that you can read for yourself, really knowing with safety and compliance. Any changes, we'd have to go back through the TRC. But through this rezoning, it allows them to go ahead and apply for building permits and effectuate, and effectuate their plans for a tower. Any questions on this one? And the second one is located, the address of the property is actually off of Charlie Angle Lane, which is right next to McIntosh. However, the portion of the property that they're seeking to rezone is only about six acres of this entire track, that entire track. So the applicant is seeking to rezone this portion of the property, which is currently located in the medium industrial zoning district to the medium density residential district. Essentially, there's a back creek that flows along this line here, which creates an impediment to be able to access the property from the east. And so if you recall, these two properties went through a annexation, or one went through an annexation and went through rezoning process. There is an approved TRC plan for these properties, which may or may not need to be amended, but the intent is to have a connection to include this property as well. So that is, that is the request. It is consistent with the future land use designation. The planning and zoning commission recommended this unanimously. Staff also recommends it. I will say that it is, you know, the medium industrial zoning district for, for this area doesn't really jive with what's happening out there and the constraints of the properties as well as the marketability for those, for those sites. So it is moving in the direction, rezoning this property to medium density residential is moving in the direction of our future land use designation M and M. We have also asked to set a public hearing date for the October seventh city council meeting for this one as well.
Okay, everybody good?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Traffic Commission Updates at this town that we hear from. Even my community mayor and council, just have one on for you very quickly.
Church Street may have requests for no parking on the, what is that, the east side, west side of, of West Fifth Street. If you've traveled this railway, here's Church Street, here's a wonderful bakery, Facebook's in those. A couple other businesses, large Almans Foods here as just, as you head towards Worth Street. You also notice parking lots for these private entities along here. The applicant was actually in front of the tattoo, made the application. Police also supported the request for no parking from Church Street all the way to Worth. We had a handful of parkers, legal, illegal, all day. You know, it was, it was becoming an issue for site distance and safety. Also, sometimes at points, they were not parking appropriately in the legal spaces and blocking some driveways. So we're not displacing a large number. There's all-day parking on Worth available in the area. So we're, we'll be displacing a few parkers, but there's plenty of other parking around. All property owners were notified. I did not get any, either comment at the commission or response to that. So everyone that owns property or has any business, also except for business operator in the long here, didn't have any objections to that. It was unanimously voted by Traffic Commission as well. Not going to answer any questions if we have any.
Any questions?
If not, we'll be on the consent agenda for tomorrow.
Recommendation from Traffic Commission?
Yes.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. Good to hear. Item H is City Manager Report, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilor. That's probably where we had some questions about where Park Road was and where Park Road extended. You know, we've had a sinkhole there. We've had some issues with driveways and we've done a lot of research on it. We've had some issues with driveways and we've done a lot of research elements, so I've asked Bob kind of give us an update of where we're at, what's been done to this point.
Park Road extension, go out west toward DeLong, Park Road splits off. The city acquired that road from DOT, or DOT turned it over to city maintenance in the early 2000s after we annexed this whole area. Last summer, a sinkhole developed in the yard of the house, and we didn't know what it was caused by, thought maybe it was an old septic tank, because our mapping did not know storm drains or any type of storm system in the area. We did some investigation, there is a manhole behind the, or adjacent to the house at the corner of School Street and Park Road. That was school settlements, our crews tried to clean it to figure out what it was, it was not a sanitary sewer manhole. We got and noted that there was a top of a concrete pipe headed in this direction. There are two curb lines down on Webb Avenue below the railroad track trestle, and standing on this hill looking down at Webb Avenue, several have said there's no way the water can drain from Webb Avenue this way. Further investigation, water drains from Webb Avenue is what? This manhole right here is about 12 feet, 12 and a half feet from the rim to the top of the pipe. We thought it was maybe a 30-inch pipe. So all of this investigation took a considerable amount of time, we contacted DOT, they had no records. Tax records indicate, I think it's this house and this house and this house are all built like 1930 or earlier. And it appeared that it was going under one of our houses, which means that storm drain is over 100-year-old probably. So we talked with a couple contractors on different options, we tried a contractor that had heavier, more robust back trucks and cleaning equipment than the city's equipment. Earlier this summer, they were able, it started, and the other issue was, we didn't know where this pipe drained to, if water was coming here. There's a ditch from the road that travels this way, this way, but there's no obvious pipe coming out anywhere there. So we did it again, we did a bunch of field investigation, and we found, I call it the oasis, because there was kind of a sand bar in the creek, there was a hole about this big round that was filled with water, and we stuck a tree branch down it and it kept going, and then we hit something solid. We had the same contractor clean the end of that pipe out, we found the outlet of the pipe, they tried to clean it this way, didn't have much success because the other issue with this is this pipe that is here, I believe it's 20, it's all 24-inch concrete. The ditch, there's a ditch that's supposed to flow this way, it doesn't go into the pond. The flow line of the ditch is about two feet higher, three feet higher than the outlet of the pipe. So the, over 100 years, there's been that much sediment that built up, so there's nowhere for the water from the pipe to flow. So it only holds water when it rains and then must dilute through the ground. So the contractor moved to this manhole here and was able to jet this line, and we expected the pipe that old to be collapsed, probably where the sinkhole was. And I left out, and after tropical storm something or other in August of last year, Park Road began to sink, and that's when we closed the road, because it was no longer safe for traffic. So we expected there to be major pipe failure there. After they cleaned it, they were able to TV the line from here all the way to the curb line, and the pipe is in remarkably good shape for a 100-year-old plus concrete pipe. There's a few issues with joints have misaligned and separated just enough that once surface water found a way, it's tunneling through and it's washed all that sediment through and filled up the pipe. So all that investigation has taken some time. That pipe is a candidate that it could be lined, similar to how we do a sanitary sewer pipe, like we're doing downtown. So that's probably the long-term solution, because it goes under this house here and goes up to Webb Avenue, comes close to that direction. So we did about all we can do without getting DOT involved, and we've had a couple meetings with DOT to explain to them that their water from Webb Avenue is flowing through this pipe, and that's the only water flowing through this pipe. Asked them if they would be willing to participate in some cost share. So they didn't outright reject that, they said we need to send that up the chain, so they're talking with their leaders to see what type of funding they may contribute to the long-term solution. So the long-term solution is we need to ditch this, open this ditch up probably 800 feet to get it drained. We've talked with the Army Corps, we believe that we'll be able to do this work under a nationwide permit, which is good, because then we don't have to pay mitigation fees for, this is a map stream, so we wouldn't be impacting the stream. So we're working on, our survey crew has done some work out here, they'll also be getting some work downstream, we'll get a contractor in to clean out that ditch, the pipe drains, and look at lining it. In the meantime, we have another contractor that we're talking with now, but we know what the situation is, we can make a temporary repair on that pipe where the joint is separated, have to dig down, and we can fill the hole, patch the road and get the road open. That's still going to take a few months in order to do that, or we may have to relay the sanitary sewer that's here, that's exposed, or follows the road and probably is impacted by this situation as well. So this has been such a complex problem with multiple issues, and that is why this has taken so long to come to a conclusion.
So since the sinkhole developed, what year, what year, a year and a half, you would say?
It was May of last year, and the sinkhole in the yard and the sinkhole in the road was with ours.
So what are the, what part of this project, the road closed?
The sinkhole that developed.
So the sinkhole in the road, I mean, the sinkhole in the yard started, and then when we had the tropical storm, that washed out more dirt, and it moved over to where the road started settling.
So when you branch, when you come through Webb Avenue and go through the train trestle, you don't go that far, you bear off to left, is that correct? So you go straight up that road, you turn left onto?
You would come, Webb Avenue, the road splits right here, you'd come right up that hill.
Right.
And this, we have closed, but you would come right up here and turn on the School Street.
Right.
Or you can come by Front Street through.
Where's Fawcett Lane?
Fawcett Lane is this road right here.
So it's up beyond Seals?
Yes.
Okay.
So as of right now, we don't know when that resolution is being?
I can't do the date right now.
This was a major, this was a major call in, we had three different callers call in. You know, the people that live in that area feel like they've been neglected because it's where it's at.
Right.
And I get it, I totally understand that, I wouldn't disagree, but I had a call this morning about it from someone that was concerned, said, oh, just fill up, all will be done with, you know? So looking back, I wish that's all we've done way back when, but.
Too late for that.
Well, yeah, it is, but I guess the thing that's new to me is that if we don't do this right, and it runs under a couple of houses, there could be, a housing will be buying a house, or it will be buying a house, or two. So that is the bigger story here, is that this thing's functional, and when it became non-functional, we see what happened, and if we don't create it and make it functional again, that could happen two more times under houses, is that not true, right? So I think that is the bigger narrative. Not only we're trying to fix a sinkhole in the road and a sinkhole in the yard, we're trying to save a couple of houses.
Bob, when was that put in, any idea?
It had to be before the houses were built.
Before 1935.
And the tax records say the houses were built in the 30s.
That means almost 80, 90 years ago, 100, and we don't have anything. That surprise, surprise.
And then, Park Road and Webb Avenue are in the railroad right away too, so we don't, if we get involved with the railroad, then that will slow everything down, so we haven't asked permission for anything until we have to. If we need, we could work on the road and sinkhole without involving the railroad. If we go down the opposite side of Park Avenue near the trestle, then we would have to notify them.
So what are we needing to get this thing moving into a visual repair that people can see is coming to an end? The Corps' permission to use a national permit?
We have kind of a verbal, and they said, send us the information, and we will reply and confirm that, so Amy Parker's working on that.
So when are we expecting to hear back from them?
I believe it was this week, they said it would be a week turnaround, so it could be next week. My understanding was that was not going to be a long-term turnaround.
So if we don't hear from them Friday, are we, do I need to call them? What's, not hearing back from them that way is not the answer. So what's the plan on getting in touch with them? Greg, mean you would go see them?
We could, we'll, we'll set a call for them.
Okay.
Yeah, we will follow up and be in touch with them to get, so that starts the process that we can do with ditching. But in the interim, we can go ahead and get a contractor or two to give us prices to dig down, prepare that line temporarily, where the joints are separated, build a sinkhole and get the road back in place.
So is this a six-month project, three-month project?
It's a while. I don't know, I would venture to say it's still probably a good six-month.
But to be honest, definitely a lot of calls about it, and they were, in May, it still comes far, to the county council, but at least with this reported information, the public is down there.
We will expedite it as much as we can, we may get it done, but I would guarantee it will be done.
So then the other piece is whether or not DOT's going to participate financially?
We're moving forward without.
But we're still going to stay on top of that?
Yes.
I think, do we need a formal request from council that they participate financially? What do we need to do there?
I think that might help a lot.
Yeah, we can, we can write a letter that comes from the mayor and city council and send it.
Everybody agree with that, add a little heat to it? And could we create a narrative that says exactly what we just talked about?
It'll be great.
So if someone comes to a council meeting and wants to speak to public comments, we handle it. I understand that this one's complex, and that this one had one failure, and then another failure which raised a red flag, and then we couldn't find a normal map or anything, but when you are living there and you look at it and you say, it looks like they just forgot about me. And I think we've got to be very, we've got to be very much sympathetic with that and do everything we can. So can we, when we hear back from Corps, will you notify council so we know that piece is done?
Yes.
Anything else from council on that project? Thank you, Greg.
Oh, one other thing I would like to mention, as councils aware, you know we're going back to the bottom market soon for the MAC for $6 million. And as you're aware now, we have our project manager onboard for the Western Sportsplex. The next step in the Western Sportsplex process is to hire a design build firm for the facility. Usually, the design is 10% of the total cost, and we have set aside $30 million for that facility, so that would, the design part would be about $3 million. We would like to recommend that we go out for $9 million when we ask for additional bond funding, that that will save us the additional issuance cost for the $3 million that if we did it later was about $200,000.
So the six for the MAC plus the three for the design build piece?
Right. The concern also we have is we don't want to deplete our fund balance, you know, with respect to having to dip into it, pay $3 million for the design.
And then have to reimburse the resolution for that. And from a fee standpoint of the bond issuance, that was, by doing it that way, it would save $200,000?
Yes.
It's time, I don't know that, Greg.
We are scheduled to be meeting with the rating agencies, and they will, the bonds that we sold at the first of December.
That comes in my earlier question, thank you.
So then that money would just be billed until we?
Right. Right, and again, we're not touching the 27 million, it's just the design.
I know that certainly you have the chance to say this to them, how, everybody else do with that? And that's all I have. All right, thank you for those updates. Couple of other things, Gary, I've had a couple, I've had several not complaints as much as what is, what do we need to do to get yard debris picked up? I've had two or three within the last couple of weeks, which is really odd. So I know the time of year could be the one thing, but, and it's not in one location or another, but all three live in various sections of the city. So if someone has yard debris that they put out, if they send it out in their yard that's close to the street, do we recognize that, do we not recognize that, do we only recognize it as put in the driveway, put on a tree, and then what is the process for getting that picked up?
So we're picking up garbage, we make a note of that, we have the ability to make notes of what they see when they're servicing the cans, it's another truck that takes care of that, depending on what it is, we have a boom truck for large yard waste, and we have a small one for these smaller bottles, so that they determine what's kicking in. I think that what's happened over the past couple of months, we have switched from the software system, we've had a change in the way that we do our quarter management, and I think during some of that transition, maybe some places were lost, and we had a storm come up that kind of put us behind, several factors at one time put us behind, but we're working Saturdays now and overtime to try to get that caught up in preparation because we have a lean season coming up in the next couple of months.
So the reasoning that I was given today when somebody said they called in was that we were short-staffed. Are we short-staffed?
No.
We're fully staffed and motionable. I appreciate that explanation, and that makes perfect sense. But it's just odd that we had that many. So, if we could really reiterate that process and do any kind of communication that we need to from the city side to be sure the public knows how that works, if it's a large amount, do they have to request it? Or we still do it the same way?
We would see it. If they, if they go ahead and request it, then we can get a work order generated in the system. It would make it a little quicker. Sometimes it's put out after the garbage truck goes by. If that's the case, it could be another week to get another truck moved by through. Yeah.
Thanks for asking. My husband, he gave me that task to find out. He had cut some limbs and they're right there, like on the curb. I, I knew I tried to change this Friday. I think they've been out there for two weeks. I think he did it two weeks ago. And they're still there, it's just not much of it. That was the same question that he had.
Yeah, it's just been odd because that's normally not, not something that we hear. So, thank you for that. And then one last thing. I know we've had some conversations. There's a, a house on Iowa Street that is at the phase of demolition, not meeting standards. But there's an open, I guess it was under permit on it. And where are we at with that, David? You and I spoke briefly, but just of council and everybody's part of the thing.
So, Russell Williams, the director of inspections, issued a letter to the property owner, basically letting him know that the open permit situation isn't, isn't how the city's going to address this. Enough time has been spent waiting for them to rectify their own situation. The, the property has gotten worse and worse over time. And so, he asked for them to, or asked for the property owner to provide him with a plan and a timeline of how he's going to address it. The deadline for that was on Friday. He did not hear back from the property owner at all. So, I would assume at this point, we're going to take the next step, get with legal, and we'll be back at some point in front of council to, to make a recommendation.
Now, this, this permit's been open for how long? Well, we've got to agree back and review it. Here, you can do just a little bit of work.
Well, it, it turned out that the original permit didn't really describe the full extent of what was happening on the property, from what I understand, based on, based on what Russell told me. The original permit talked about just some interior renovation. But when there was a recent site inspection by Russell and others, the entire inside has been gutted. There's no floor, there's no walls, there's holes in the ceiling. So, it's basically open to the elements. So, he also issued, I think it was a stop work order. I can give you more details specifically what he did. But he issued a stop work, work order and put the permit on hold, basically saying it doesn't reflect what needs to be done. And so, it was kind of a two-fold situation, addressing the existing permit and also putting the property owner on notice in terms of how they were going to address the property going forward. Since that hasn't been addressed by the property owner, we're going to, we're going to discuss with legal the next steps in terms of ultimately the process to, to move forward and make a recommendation to council. I think council would have to be involved in, in what the next steps will be.
If the original permit was issued, when do we know?
Off the top of my head, I don't have the date, but it was, I don't want to give you the wrong information. So, I can put it in a summary or have Russell provide a summary to you.
It's over, it's over two years, I do know that, because we've been talking about it for about a year.
The, again, I don't want to speak for the inspections department, but I understood that they were tucking to do something and then completely stopped. And now the situation is, is much worse. They had boarded up the property to, to keep it safe. However, like I said, now there isn't much more, it's much more open to the elements. And so, we are pretty confident that we can move forward with, with some next steps to you.
Obviously, we do not have in the budget a line item for demolition of distressed properties. But council has said if we have those.
We can do a quick.
We will budget amendments every month. Let's address that. Is that correct, council?
I'd like, I'd like to do that. I'd like to pick up on what I mentioned, Amon Street. Anything going on there?
We'll get you another day.
Okay.
I can't remember all the time.
It's in the block between Bed Street and Broad Street, or, you know, I forget your head. It'll come down either way. But also too, you know, in the coming, coming year, we used to do these things sort of fairly routinely. And if they were not, you know, I get prepared, you know, we would, we would demolish that. And to be perfectly honest, it'd probably be better to do that, even though it costs the city some upfront money. Because the property is going to be valued more with, without the dilapidated, you know, substandard house on it than it is now. And, but nittily, I think there's some others in town, and a couple of people have mentioned those to me. But two things, the more immediate is the Amon Street. But, you know, next year, in the budget, we'll look at, because at one time we did have some money that we, you know, and, and I know it takes money, the city has to upfront the money, you know, to tear it down. So, it, it all goes clean, you know, we may not collect it, but at some point, somebody buys it and the property is going to be valued more, quite frankly, with the removal. It's, I, I know, I know about a couple situations, you know, because, I tried myself and, and they, at, at hearing a trial of the matter, it was, the property owner was claiming that, you know, they'd been damaged X dollars. We were successful showing that the property was actually approved by us taking it down. But nittily, just put that on the table. Thank you.
I think the situation we get into in certainly certain neighborhoods and certain pockets of the community where the neighborhood's really becoming victimized by an individual that does not do what they're supposed to do. And it, it takes us a while to get through that. And it almost makes the residents there feel like that individual has more rights than they do. And, and that's another, that's just another one of those perceptions that's hard to defend. So, I would be of the belief, I haven't seen the world of Amon, but in my world, if, if this thing's gone this far, it's got no floors, it's got no walls, there are roofs hanging in, let's move like lightning to get that thing torn down.
Absolutely.
Does everybody agree with that?
Yeah. The other thing, I had a question a couple of weeks ago about renovation of a house. It went to this extent. But the policy in terms of having a trash bin on site when you're doing renovations, so materials can be taken out and stored, is, is that a policy that we, do we actually do inspections? Do we force that? Because in this particular situation that people are just taking the street every, and then they're in the backyard, then taking the street on a, every two or three weeks basis and sort of having rented a bin, put the materials in. And the neighborhood was, you know, what do you have with that?
You're talking about instead of using a bin, they're using city services?
That's right. Yeah.
That's, they're taking advantage of city services.
I can look into seeing whether or not we have a requirement to have an on-site bin. I, I believe I know a property in the instance that you're talking about. And, and code enforcement had to work with the property owner to get all, the debris was all around. And they assisted in helping to move the debris to a location where it could be picked up. But I will look to see if we have any requirement for, for on-site trash.
There needs to be, if there's going to be a permit issued, it either needs to be the contractors accepting responsibility for removal or there needs to be an on-site bin.
That's right. If you have any solution, install it.
If it's, if I'm going to get it as a homeowner and I'm going to get my own permit, then I've got to put it on that bin. Unless I've got a contractor that's agreed that they will be responsible for doing it.
Yeah.
Anything else from council? It's not David?
I should maybe ask the city council. We'd like to go to closed session at this time pursuant to Volcan General Statute one four three, three eighteen, point eleven eighty-four, for the purpose of economic development. Discuss items related to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the city of Burlington, including an agreement on the potential list of economic development incentives that may be offered in negotiations pursuant to NCGS one fifty-eight, seven oh one, and also pursuant to one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven eighty-six, discuss personnel, namely the city manager vacancy.
So, the request is to go in closed session for economic purposes and personnel purposes as stated. Is there a motion to, is your second? I have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
In closed. So, this time we'll go into closed session.
All right, this time we'll entertain a motion to go back into open session.
Second.
Motion, the second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
He opposed. We are in open session with no one in business, this time we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
He opposed.
Thank you, David, it was a great night tonight, John.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.